Here.
Catherine Ochkin.
Here.
Rich Genelli.
Here.
Al Russo.
Here.
Amy Spolino.
Here.
Two missing.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're gonna turn the recognition part over to Dr. Sal.
Yes, thank you very much. We'll start with Jill. Is Jill here?
Yes, I am here.
Jill, well, first of all, Jill, I just wanna put you on the pedestal and say thank you for all that you've done. You've led the music department in ways that I just can't imagine. It's been wonderful. You've brought in a lot of resources. We've got so many youngsters now on instruments, and it's really been a guiding light for us. So you're coming through financial tough times, boards, and usually look at curtailing those, but our board has been very supportive of it. But it would have been difficult without your leadership in getting the grant and the instruments for the kids to play. It's very, very expensive. So we got an award. Maybe you could talk to the board about the award again and let them know what you're doing, please. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Dr. Sal. And I would like to echo your words that it's been the support of the administration, the Board of Education, the school district, fellow teachers in all contents, our parents, and our community, because we still show that we believe in educating the whole child, and we believe in the arts, and we believe in all content areas. And that's just a very important message that we are sending out, and we just can't thank you enough for all of your support that you continue to give us. It has been, it has been a crazy year, right? I guess that's the easiest word for it. And last March, the lights went off and the sound went off in our music rooms, literally. It was, we've never heard quiet music rooms before, and that's, that had been what we had been hearing for a long time. So like every other educator, we've, you know, we've worked really hard to, to gain as much as we can in resources, to do as much blended learning. And in the process, as a department, we've learned amazing ways to work together that we haven't had the opportunity before, and really amazing ways to move students forward after we come out of this. And I do believe that we're gonna come out of this in a great spot. We, we began the Save the Music Grant about, I wanna say, four or five years ago. It began with three of our elementary schools. We were given a core band grant for each of the schools. There is obviously a lot of requirements that we follow in order to keep that grant. Following our first year, we received three more grants. Moving forward to there, we also have seen grants and additional instruments on top of it go to Shell to Rock School. With the pandemic, there's been a lot of freezing, you know, I think in the grant and nonprofit world, but we were able to achieve a hybrid piano that we brought, put to one of our middle schools. It's a top-of-the-line piano that records, and just all wonderful things that support students. In addition to Save the Music Foundation, we've been so blessed to work with an organization called Little Kids Rock. They're a national organization whose pedagogy reflects modern band music and teaching kids what they, what they know and what they're interested in. So when we think about Student Center of Learning and we think about tapping into our kids' interests, that, that's where, that's where it begins. Using music as a second language, we've been able, through that grant, to obtain guitars and drums and electric basses and ukuleles and keyboards. And I even feel like a rock star doing it, and I didn't feel like one before. So it's been, it's been a really great experience. And expanding it to all of our K-12 schools, that program has been wonderful as well. Very surprisingly, we did receive another grant this year. As, you know, with, with all the mitigation strategies we've been doing to keep our students and our staff healthy and safe and to get back into schools, which is, which is what we all want, we were able to, we, it was a $10,000 grant, actually, from Save the Music Foundation that was funded by Sony, and it was PPE equipment for our wind instruments. The National Federation of High Schools released their third round of aerosol studies, which shows all of the safe mitigation and ways that we can be performing in school. That guidance has gone out to the district. A huge thank you to Kathy and to Courtney, who provided the masks and the funding. We needed additional surgical masks and KN-95 masks to go along with that. And the district came through, and I just really wanted to acknowledge the tremendous help that they've given us through this. Although we've lost a lot of authentic music making as we knew it, we've gained a lot. And what, what warms my heart is when I see, I saw in the beginning of the year, teachers actually outside of their schools waiting for students to come with instruments, to change strings, to tune instruments, to give kids the paperwork that they needed. We had a teacher in the beginning of the year that did a tremendous Donors Choose and was able to send music kits home with every one of her students to elementary schools. So I think the more, the more we've gotten through this, the more we've learned. And I just, again, I couldn't help out in honor to work with the group of teachers that I do work with. We, we recently put together a teacher appreciation video for them. One of the questions I ask them every year is, "Why did you become a music teacher?" And the common answer is, "Because music is my passion. I love teaching." And I had such a positive experience as a student that I wanna share that with, with the rest of the kids in the world. And it's just so important that, that we as educators, you know, that we care as much as we do. And just wanted to reiterate that and how impressed I am by, by, by our music staff. So a huge thank you. It's, it's been, it's been a tough year. There's been a lot of school districts making very tough decisions. And to the best of our ability, we've kept our programs intact. And again, I wanna thank all of you for that, too. Although, Dr. Sal, I did promise you brevity as a parting gift for your retirement. So I will, I will stop talking because I do believe that students and what students produce for itself. So I have a short montage of video of clips that we obtained permission for to share with all of you. And I can, I can go ahead and do that.
Sure.
I'm sorry. I thought I could quickly pull that button.
So this all resulted in us getting the, being recognized the best community for music education by the foundation, which is a tremendous tonic thinking of, of the challenge that we have. So pretty impressive.
Thank you. I actually cannot believe that we achieved this three years in a row. It's, it's not a very easy task to get. There's over 600 school districts in the country that received it, and we were one of 23 in Connecticut. Neighbors, our neighbors in Bethel also did receive it again this year. And just a huge congratulations to our colleagues across the state that also were able to achieve this.
All right, go ahead. Can you play it?
I think it is. I think we're in.
Hello, my name is Timothy, and I've been in the orchestra at Danbury High School for two years now. I feel like music has really had a big impact on my school experience. And a lot of this comes from just how orchestra is a different class in nature than a lot of the other classes that I take at Danbury High School.
Every mood has a song to match with it. It really helps, and it can make me happier. And I find a lot of songs that I can relate to, and I know that I'm not like alone. I know that it's not only me. So that makes me happy. Like, it does, like, it doesn't have to be sadness. It can also be like joy for something, a specific thing that also has a song written about it. So we, I, I know I have someone who shares that same joy with me, and that makes me happy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Thank you. Thank you for your leadership.
All the parents who homeschooled their children and worked from home and allowed them to play an instrument while this was all going on. So, but thank you all very much. And congratulations to our cave winners this evening.
Thank you.
Dr. Sal, you're gonna do the cave students?
Yes, if you're ready for that, sure.
Yes.
The Connecticut Association Boards of Education, as you know, is 169 districts. And each district Board of Ed recognized students in their school system for their leadership and contribution to, to the wellness of the schools and the climate of the schools. And tonight, we have families and youngsters that we'd like to present the award to. I think we'll start with Dr. Thomas at Broadview.
Yes. And Amanda, I think I saw you online. I just wanna make sure. Just say yes.
Yeah.
Okay, great, because I keep just talking to myself. Amanda, we, first of all, it's such an honor always to present stellar students to the board. We are just so proud of our, all of our students. But when we have kids that have maintained excellent grade averages, from sixth grade all the way up to eighth grade, it's really a great honor as a principal to be able to present them. So thank you so much for giving us this opportunity. My first student at Broadview is Amanda. Amanda is a bright, passionate, and responsible young lady. She has maintained a stellar academic record throughout her whole three years at Broadview. In addition to having an academic, nothing but academic success, she is also compassionate towards others, and she also is very, she can persevere over any obstacle that you put in front of her. She's just amazing like that. She participates in all kinds of community services, especially in the Broadview community. What I like about the fact that she is part of the National Junior Honor Society, but the best part is this year, we challenged our National Honor Society to do peer tutoring with the students that were struggling a little bit with their peers. And Amanda took on the call and was extraordinary. Did a great job helping out the students. So we're just very proud of her. She just keeps pushing through, wanting to learn new things. I just can't think of anyone who deserves this award more than Amanda. So Amanda, congratulations.
Thank you.
And is Mom or Dad there?
Yeah, my dad's here.
Dad, keep it going. She's going to the high school, so I think Mr. Donovan would appreciate it if you keep her going strong. Congratulations, Amanda. Next, we have Gianni Shafalo. What interesting thing about Gianni is I had him when I was at Penbrook in kindergarten. Not many principals can say they had students from kindergarten to eighth grade. I get to say I did. And he was an extraordinary student at Penbrook. Now, he's graduating from, promoting from Broadview. He's just a hard-working student. He's very diligent. He's been maintained a high GPA at Broadview for all three years. He ensures that he will stay on top of something. When Gianni say he's gonna do it, he'll do it. It's just simple as that. He keeps his word. Also, what I like about him, too, is he's exemplary, not just with his academics. He stands up for other students. He doesn't, he's not afraid to speak his mind, but he does it respectfully, and he's very passionate. He stands up for every cause, and he doesn't see, he doesn't like to see the underdog suffer. And he's just that type of kid that shows respect for everyone, and he demands respect, which is even better. So I am just thrilled. I didn't see him on, but if he was on, you would be with me in congratulating him for being an extraordinary student at Broadview. And once again, I always say it, but I always mean it. You're gonna hear about them again, so just remember the names. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas.
Rogers Park, Dr. Zalida.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for honoring all these students. This really is my favorite time of the year, not just because we're winding down, but because we do get the opportunity to recognize some of these eighth-grade students as they round out their middle school experience. And so tonight, I had the pleasure of introducing you to our two cave winners. Our first winner is Raquel Bear. I know I see her here. Hi, Raquel. Well, Raquel is such a doll. She is the sweetest kid. She takes her classwork so seriously, and she's always given her best effort. She works hard on all of her assignments, and I think she might be our only student who was handed in every single one of them this year, and that's a feat. So we are so proud of her. She really has a positive influence also on those who are around her because she is so fun and she's clever. And her teachers and her classmates are just delighted to be around her. She's a very thoughtful girl. She often gives thoughtful gifts and sweet treats to her friends, and they just love her for her. She also likes to have fun, and she loves to play among us with her classmates when they get some downtime. So I'm super excited to, to welcome her here tonight and to honor her with this cave award. So congratulations, Raquel. And our second winner is Alexandra Perez-Lieva. And Alexandra demonstrates leadership qualities both academically and socially at Rogers Park. She is a very active member of our National Junior Honor Society, the Social Justice Club, the Yearbook Club, and the Student Council. In class, she is one of our active participants, and she's often offering assistance to other students whenever possible. She's another very kind and understanding student, and her teachers say that she is an absolute pleasure to have in class. So these are two more names to keep in your head, and I know Mr. Donovan will be happy to have both of them on the DHS next year. And so I congratulate Alexandra as well. Didn't see her on here, but if she was here, congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zeta. And we have from Westside Middle School, Dr. Levanka.
Hi, thank you, Dr. Sal. Yes, I wanna echo Dr. Thomas and Dr. Zeta's comments. Always a great honor to recognize our students for the excellent work they do, and we're very proud of them. So first, I would like to introduce Chloe Dijalani. Chloe, I know I saw you. And say hello, because if you don't say hello, then no one in the YouTube audience gets to see you. So. Chloe is an absolutely wonderful student. She's a member of our National Junior Honor Society. She's participated in the theater program. She likes to read. And one thing I really love about Chloe is she's such an advocate for positive social change. And you can see that she, she had an amazing interview with the production that Theater Works did with us earlier this year that she can see. She's a wonderful writer. She's recognized by the Connecticut Writing Project for her work, and just a fantastic student. So we're very proud to recognize you, Chloe, for all your great work. And second, I'd like to introduce Eric Gough. Eric, say hello to everybody.
Hello. So Eric is another wonderful student. He always makes you smile. He's also a member of the National Junior Honor Society. He's a classically trained pianist. He's a risk taker in his learning. Eric did amazing work this year on his, his science research projects, presented to the state, and won numerous awards for his work. He did the state, came and borrowed our giant structure matter crusher and, and did a fantastic project with some plastics and really just great, amazing work. He's a great debater. He acknowledges his peers and their points of view, and we're very proud to recognize Eric for his work. And I agree with Dr. Thompson, Dr. Zalida. Again, we look forward to seeing you guys again in four years, just like we're recognizing Becca, who's a senior this year, who was a graduate. Gotta give her the props for that, who will be recognized by Mr. Donovan and all of it. So congratulations to Eric and Chloe.
Thank you, Dr. Levanka. I'm gonna go to ACE and then to Danbury. So we'll go with John Weber next. Mr. Weber?
Sure. There's two, good evening, everyone. There's two ACE staff members here. So just so people understand, the ACE teachers wear multiple hats. And so while they are content area teachers, they also serve in the capacity of a guidance teacher. So Daniella Esposito will present the second student because that's her guidance student. And, excuse me, the guidance teachers really build a strong relationship. So the first student I'm gonna present is Brian Galarza Valverde. He is one of Glenda Armstrong's students, so I'm pleased to read the narrative that Glenda wrote for Brian. Brian Galarza Valverde has embraced the American dream. He is a person that we can be proud of today, tomorrow, well into the future. He's inspired us as educators at ACE because he was inspired by a math teacher in middle school that saw a potential in him that he did not see in himself. He took that inspiration as a framework to manage his life to prepare for the future. Brian has managed his life so far in many different positive aspects that allow him to be worthy to receive this prestigious award. When he found himself being overly influenced by negative forces, he transferred to ACE. At ACE, he positively responded to our focus on social and emotional skill development that we provide. This resulted in Brian being recognized multiple times as the ACE Student of the Week and Student of the Month winner. This caring, positive young man gained greater motivation for life when his, when his friend unexpectedly passed away last summer. Brian refocused himself to graduate early in January 2021, a semester early, at 17 years old, with a grade point average of over 3.2. This was after he took a part-time job during COVID to help his family out last spring, as well as assist his little sister each day with her studies when she was distance learning. Presently, Brian still maintains the same job that he had back in last spring, as well as being a student at Nogatuck Valley. He just recently concluded his first three classes, took his math exam today, excuse me, and actually walked all the way to take his exam to make sure that he got there. Brian also recently just swore into the National Guard. So his goal is to serve the country that has allowed him to embrace his, his own personal American dream. Congratulations, Brian.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Daniela Esposito. I saw Leila there. Leila, do you want to say hi?
Hi.
I am Leila Fritus's guidance teacher, as John had said, and I'm just thrilled to be able to present this award and to talk about Leila, because not only am I her teacher and she's my student, but she is just such a great person, and I'm really fortunate to know her and to have her among my guidance students. She was recognized by all of the ACE teachers. We wanted to acknowledge and recognize her hard work and her perseverance over the past years of high school. She's grown from a shy young girl who was unsure of her abilities and who lacked some confidence into a strong, resilient young woman who's found her voice, her strengths, and her potential. From day one at ACE, Leila has shown others her very kind heart, her thoughtfulness, and her concern for her peers and her teachers. And we really need more people in the world like you, Leila. At school, I have witnessed that Leila is reliable. She's skilled in diplomacy. She stands up for people who need an ally or who need a helping hand. And in the last year, she's been working on the front lines at a grocery store during, during COVID while juggling school and maintaining her grades. Leila's growth, commitment, thoughtfulness, and potential predict her very bright future. Congratulations, Leila.
Congratulations. And the last for this evening, I'm Mr. Donovan, Danbury High School.
Thank you. As you could see, I'm in my mobile office right now, so I didn't even get a chance to get home yet. So, you know, when the CAVE award comes out, the two that I'm presenting to you tonight were the first two that popped into my mind. When they did it, they're gonna be very familiar names to you, because you've had them for the past two years, I believe, Jake and Rebecca, right? Two years, they've been representing Danbury High School at the Board of Education. I couldn't be prouder of these two, not just in their academics, but when we shut down for COVID, they took a huge leadership role in trying to work with the student body and seeing how we can connect with students from virtual, you know, virtual spirit weeks to any idea we could. And we were talking all the time about things we could do to get better. But first, I'll start with Rebecca, who is an extremely hardworking student. Currently, BOG Student Body President, Soul Studies Honor Society President, Music Honor Society Vice President, the Model United Nations Secretary, a lead within the Danbury High School Theater Productions, a liaison to the Danbury Board of Education, as you know. In addition to our extracurriculars, Rebecca works two jobs, takes care of her brother Nick, who's at our school, who has disabilities during the day while his single mother works. Doing all of that, she has a 4.4 grade point average. During her time at the high school, she's been awarded a high honor roll seven times, and outstanding delegate twice in the Yale Model United Nations Program. She's excited to continue that, the Model United Nations Program, further in her college career. She's dedicated to her academics. She's just an all-around, really cool person to have conversations with that you can take to a different level, and we enjoy her and Jake a lot. Where'd we find out we're going, Becca? I think it was Temple?
Yeah.
She'll be attending Temple University in the fall. She had a lot of choices, a lot of discussions. That, UCLA was one that we were going back and forth, but I don't think mom wanted her going that far away. She didn't want to go that far.
Too expensive.
Too expensive. So, her hard work paid off, and Temple gave her a nice package that was affordable, so she's gonna be heading down there.
Congratulations, Rebecca.
And Jake has never failed to put hard work in. Each and every year, he assumed a role in the student government from his freshman year. He was the secretary, sophomore year as a secretary. And then he moved on to Student Body Secretary as a junior, and now he's the Vice President this year of the BOG. He's a membership chair of the Key Club, was a participant for two years in that, in the Key Club. No stranger to all the different clubs involving himself in theater, the Hatters Herald, the Yearbook Committee, Green Club, various National Honor Society, gaining insight from his experiences. He earned high honors, I believe it was, every semester, Jake, was it high honors? And he's got a 4.3 GPA. He's never relented on his schoolwork. He's never stopped. He's always kept it going. His hair is usually a different color, once every two, three weeks, right? We get to guess what we're gonna do there, and he loves serving in his community as well. And Jake, did you make a decision about next year yet?
I did. I'll be attending University of Miami in Florida.
Two words for you, Jake, sunblock. Now, I'm not sure if that's two words or one word, but, you know, me and you gotta have a conversation before you go down there, my friend.
I'll definitely be packing that in my bag.
In closing, you did more than the, than anybody when it came to student government in the past two years. We couldn't hold elections, so they stayed on with the jobs. They moved up in the jobs, and they put all their effort into the student body of DHS, which I'm not even sure the students recognize, but I just wanted them both to know that the principal of Danbury High School thanks both of you for spending time with him during COVID, to spending time thinking about the student body, and I'm so excited to see you guys on June 10.
Congratulations, everyone. We're so proud. You know, what's interesting, we just finished the Portrait of a Graduate, and Mr. Genelli said something like, you know, how do I put this into words, you know? And Kevin said, well, you know what? It's, let's just call it our North Star. I think we just witnessed our North Stars, guys, right, right in front of us. So, this is what we want to emulate. These are the characteristics that we want in our graduates, and the attitudes, and just all-around wonderful contributors to the goodness of, of Danbury and Danbury High School. So, I congratulate all of you on behalf of the Board. Congratulations. Thank you. Next, we have, let me just, I'm trying, my keeps going up. I had sent something out. It's, it's National Nurses Week. I think Rachel Choweski has something that I sent out. She was gonna read. I know Kathy's here, so Rachel, you have it?
I do. Yep.
Would you read it for me, please?
Sure. In honor of National School Nurse Day today, May 12, please accept this note of appreciation on behalf of our students, the Danbury Board of Education, and the Danbury School Community. You are extraordinary individuals, and I want to recognize each of you for your part in the very important task of keeping our school community safe, well, during this difficult and uncertain year of the pandemic. This has enabled our students to continue to learn to their highest potential. As National Nurses Week comes to a close, I am hopeful that each and every one of you have been reassured of how valued, important, appreciated, embraced, and loved you are. As this is Dr. Sal's last year with you, he would like you to know that through your service, you make a difference in the lives of our students and families every day, and your passion, commitment, and dedication are qualities that he will never forget, nor has he ever taken for granted. On behalf of the Danbury Public Schools community, thank you.
Thank you.
Give me just a second here. Kathy, I know you're here. Are you not?
Yes, I'm here, Dr. Sal. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. And thank you. Yes, but I just would like to thank you for that beautiful message. It's greatly appreciated. On behalf of our amazing nursing staff, who have gone truly above and beyond during this pandemic, we sincerely thank you, Dr. Sal. Thank you for your leadership. To all our administrators who are so supportive of our school nurses, I really appreciate your message. Thank you.
Terrific. And maybe you can make an announcement about the vaccine you just...
Yes. So, as you may have heard, the FDA has given emergency use authorization to Pfizer to now administer their vaccine to children ages 12 to 15. So, we've once again partnered with the Community Health Center, and today I sent out registration links beginning tomorrow. Every day, including the weekend through May 18, students ages 12 to 15 will have the opportunity to get the vaccine. It's also available through the Vaccine Assistance Line to make appointments, as well as VAMs. And late this afternoon, I was informed that our school-based health centers, possibly by the end of next week, will be able to obtain up to 1,000 doses of the Pfizer vaccine. So, I'll be working with them in the next day or so to be planning clinics for our schools. It will be open to students 12 through 18 years of age. Regardless of whether they are registered with our school-based health centers, that is not a requirement. And they will also open the vaccines to parents of those students if they have not yet been vaccinated. So, this is a very exciting opportunity, certainly a positive step in moving us forward towards herd immunity, and we're very happy to be able to offer it.
Once again, thank you for your leadership. I mean, I'm just amazed this was gonna happen, and we already got a plan to implement it. So, this is what my note went out today. Just so many levels of appreciation. Thank you again. Amanda, we're through with the recognition.
Thank you, Dr. Sal. Moving on down the agenda, we go on to public participation. The Board welcomes public participation and asks that the comments be limited to three minutes. The public may offer objective comments of school operations and programs that concern them. The Board will not permit any expression of personal complaints or defamatory comments about Board of Education personnel and students, nor against any person connected with the Danbury Public School system. Due to the unique nature of the COVID-19 crisis and the limitation of technologies, members of the public who are Danbury residents are invited to send brief comments and questions by email in advance to DPSPublicCommentsBoardofEd@danbury.k12.ct.us. Now, at this time, I'm gonna ask Kara, are there any comments to read tonight? Kara?
I think the mute button's on. Kara, can you hear us?
Sorry about that. Yes. Okay, we have two public comments. First one is from Chrissy Marufi. "Good evening, all. I wanted to start off by saying how grateful I am for all of your hard work and dedication, especially given the increased difficulty of navigating us through this pandemic the last year and a half. At the last BOE meeting, as well as the reopening workshop, it was mentioned by Dr. Sal that although distance learning will not be an option next year, we will be able to utilize that framework next school year for inclement weather-related closures. As we all know, over this past year, remote learning on a snow day quickly became a topic of heated debate and one that most people have strong opinions on, opinions on one way or another. There are no doubt many scheduling benefits to having a reliable last day of school date months in advance, and there are also valid social, emotional concerns overtaking away that unexpected day off, as it is something as children enjoy and have fond memories of long into adulthood. I wondered if we might be able to find a balance between the two scenarios. For instance, maybe you can give students the first one or two snow days, as traditional days off from learning. Then after that, those that have been used, fall back to a remote learning option for all the others going forward. Doing this could allow us to have the best of both worlds, keeping a mostly fixed last day of school, as well as a little of that spontaneity. Students and staff enjoy so much and look forward to. Thank you again for all your hard work and allowing me this opportunity to contribute an opinion." And the second and final comment is from Oswaldo Chin. "I would like to thank all of you for the great work you have been doing despite the pandemic. Please do not feel discouraged or unfounded by baseless criticisms from people who do not represent our children, nor they represent the Latino community. These people are representing special interests, and it's their personal agenda under the camouflage of advocating for our children and the Latino community. Please keep up the good work, and thank you for your time." And that concludes the public participation.
Thank you so very much, Kara. The Consent Cal. Kathy, could you make a motion to, for the Consent Calendar, please?
If the Board of Education approved the items on the Consent Calendar Exhibits 21 through 68 through 21-70 as recommended.
Motion made by Kathy. Could I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Joe DeSilva. Any question concerning the Consent Calendar? CNN. Kathy, could you call for the Consent Calendar, please?
Yes, yes. Rachel?
Aye.
Gladys?
Yes.
Lauren?
Aye.
Joe DeSilva?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And Amy?
Aye.
I just have it.
Okay, thank you. The motion is so, Kara. Educational Staff Representative, NEA Aaron?
Ms. Cooper, can I just interject just quickly? Excuse me. We have some, we have some students on the call in our meeting, just may not be aware that they're excused to go. So, I just wanted to let them, just wanted to thank them for joining us this evening. And they're certainly welcome to stay, but if they don't want to stay, they'd certainly welcome to leave.
Thank you for sending that message out, Mr. Warren.
Sorry, Aaron, excuse me.
No problem.
Thank you.
Everyone, good evening. It's nice to meet you all. I am so excited. We had, I have something wonderful to share with you. We had an event this afternoon. As you may or may not know, every year, NEA Danbury sponsors a Retirement Teacher Appreciation Dinner at the end of the year in May, and usually we host upwards of 350 people at the Amber Room. Well, obvious, for obvious reasons, we weren't able to do that kind of an event this year. And so we were, how can we celebrate our retirees? How can we celebrate our teachers after the hard work that they've put in for this year and do it in a fun way that was meaningful? So, what we came up with was kind of a drive-by caravan at the Amber Room, very similar to what the Danbury Museum had done for their ball this year, where our teachers were able to come by and pick up a free dinner for this evening to feed for their families, and they were also able to drive by and celebrate our retirees. We had seven retirees that we honored this afternoon, and it was quite an interesting setup. They got to sit at little cocktail tables in front of the Amber Room with, you know, balloons and decorations, as all teachers and colleagues got to drive by, celebrate with them in their decorated cars, and then pick up a meal. So, it was kind of yet another one of our alternative ways of celebration and accommodating this unusual terrain that we've all been kind of navigating this year. But it was a very special moment, and we were thrilled to be able to do that for our teachers this evening. Also wanted to mention the rally that took place last week, the Bridge the Gap to Fully Fund Our School Budget. Obviously, you all know, we've been working diligently to try and get the word out to our community members, to our council members, and to our mayor, to try and change the tide of funding our school budget. We all know now that, you know, we didn't, we didn't end up with what we wanted, and I don't want anyone who participated in, you know, lobbying the common council and making phone calls to our elected officials and reaching out to the mayor. I don't want anyone to feel like they fell short, because the efforts didn't fall short. It's, it's the people that are choosing to not fully fund our education, our BOE-recommended budget, that are really failing our schools and our children. So, I wanted to just congratulate everybody for putting in a hard-pressed effort to get more money for our students this year, because, you know, whether we all agree or disagree on certain issues, we can all agree that our schools need more money, and our kids deserve more money. And that's something that we're all in the same boat, working it towards. So, the rally was a great success. We had over 100 people came. We had people from all different parts of our community and different organizations that came to speak out on behalf of funding the budget fully, and we will not give up. We're going to continue the push. And I just want everybody to be reminded that the teachers do lead this charge. Every year, every spring, we're always fighting for that budget and fighting for our students. So, a couple of good things. And Jill Russell Benner, my gosh, that video you put together, whoa, tears. You are such an amazing person. I'm glad to call you my friend. And Jake Goodwin and Becca DiSilvio, oh my goodness, you two, as someone who personally knows you and all the work that you have done over the years to be a stellar student, sorry about my phone ringing in the background, we're just really, really proud of you. Sorry about my phone ringing in the background. We're just really, really proud of you. And Jake, as a former student of mine, my goodness, I'm so proud of you. So I wanted to put that forward. I also wanted to address a couple of misconceptions from our board meeting from a couple of weeks ago. I kind of wanted to just clarify a few things. And we won't go get into any of the topic of discussion from the past meeting. But I do wanted to put some things out there for the board to hear tonight. Some of the comments that were directed towards me, I perceived as animus directed at me, whether they were meant to be or not. And I replaying that whole, that whole evening in my mind and discussing it with my executive board officers and fellow teachers, I think there was a miscommunication and a misunderstanding. Please note that the information that I was trying to bring to you that evening, I had already shared with Dr. Sal and had already followed the proper chain of command to do our due diligence to rectify things. When we bring things to you, you can trust that we've always brought things to our superintendent and brought things to the chain of command and through the proper channels before it comes to you. There are times, however, when our nearly 1,000 teachers feel like you need some additional information. And that was what I was attempting to do on their behalf a few weeks ago. Though I'm proud to call myself a third grade teacher and I adore my students, when I come here to speak to you, I'm not speaking as Erin Daly, the third grade teacher employee. I'm speaking as Erin Daly, the elected union president that represents 1,000 teachers. I'm not here talking as a teacher. I'm here talking as a president who has to look out for all the teachers in Danbury. That's my role, just as all of our Board of Ed members are elected to do their, to do their service for their community. My role is I've been elected to make sure I give you information that the teachers want me to give you, want me to share with you and that I'm serving to protect the teachers' best interests. That's my role. I think it's, it's difficult sometimes when I have to bring information that's unpleasant. I try to always bring you some good news and some good scenarios and good stories that are going on in the teacher world as long, as well as things that are going on with our students. But I am charged with bringing you the good, the bad, and oftentimes the ugly because that's what's going to make our school district better. And you having all the information that you need to have, that we want to share with you, that sometimes you may not get a chance to get, that's my job. That's my role. And it was my goal a few weeks ago to give you some information and it was my hope that Dr. Sal would bring you additional information in executive session. I don't know if that took place. And you have to understand, from the teacher's point of view, this is our only forum to communicate with the board. This is it. This is our one opportunity. And they do that through me. So everything I bring to you is their voice. So I want to make sure that we continue our good working relationship and that, you know, you understand that my, my role is to bring you information and what we perceive as things that you need to know. And also just to let you know, I know it was said as a comment, but as a union leader, I can't be reprimanded, reprimanded for bringing you information and for speaking the voice of the teachers. That's, that's just not something that can happen. Maybe Erin Daly, the employee, but certainly not Erin Daly, the union leader, which is how I come to you this evening. I really want to just impress that the city and the school system will only, only work well when there's a free flow of ideas and collaboration. And I really hope to make sure that we continue on that road. So thank you again, and I appreciate you listening as always, and I'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Madam Chair, I think Christie is available. Oh boy. Did we go disconnected? Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I can hear you, Dr. Sal. Oh, okay. Should we? Okay. Thank you. I didn't know if something happened in the video. Do you, Gladys, did you want to go to Dr. Zalida?
Yes. I was muted, sorry. Okay, Dr. Zalida.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so happy to be able to continue the celebration of the arts this evening. I have the great fortune of working with Jill and I'm so grateful for her tenacity and her collaborative nature that's really made this a success. So for tonight's silver lining across the district, I want to give a special thank you to Rachel Wade, another influential arts person. She's our K-8 art department head who shared with me the slides I'm going to present with you. I just threw some iMovie music on it. So I want to, it's a short one, I promise. So please enjoy. I'm bringing to you a look at our K-8 students' art experience this year. So do please enjoy. So thank you so much. I know I'm missing in person the Board of Ed room and I always remember Rachel would fill the walls with all the amazing artwork that our students did. So, you know, that was a little bit fast, but I hope that you enjoyed it and I look forward to seeing you all soon. Thank you.
No, thank you, Dr. Zalida. What beautiful artwork. I mean, it was beautiful. Thank you. Student reps? Jake?
I think I'm going to do it today.
Okay, okay.
So is Jake still here?
Okay, Rebecca, okay.
I don't know. Okay, Jake is still here, but I think I'm going to do it. Um, first off, I just wanted to say thank you for honoring me today. And I think Jake feels the same way. That was very kind. I don't, I get like weird when people say nice things about me, but I am very thankful, so.
Well deserved, by the way.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate it. Um, but yeah, we do have some exciting stuff to talk about for like end of the year things. So we sold prom tickets last week. That was like the last week of selling them. And the seniors are really excited that we were able to do a prom. I know they didn't have one last year, which was, I know a lot of kids bought their dresses, but I think I'm reusing mine, so probably what's happening for a lot of people. So that's going to be on May 28th at the Amber Room. And I think it's going to be outside and inside. I'm not entirely sure. I, I sometimes miss the memo on what's going on, but I'm pretty sure that's what's happening. Also, the BOG organized the class officer elections. So last year, we didn't have class officer elections just because of everything that was going on. But this year, we were able to culminate about 25 different students participated in the student elections, which I was pretty proud of. By just getting kids to participate online can be very difficult. But we had students campaigning through social media and stuff like that. And I had over 300 ballots filled out just today for the senior class. And it's only the first day and it's closing tomorrow. So that was, that was nice to see. And students went really all out with it. Some were using green screens to like put a little presidential background. Yeah, it was pretty cool. So then the BOG elections, which are different from the class officer elections because BOG is the entire student body, those are happening next week. Applications were due today. And then I think there's a Board of Education meeting in June 9th. I think that's when we're bringing the new BOG elected officials and everybody can meet them at that time. And then Jake and I will officially retire from our duties as Board of Education liaisons, which will be sad because we've been doing it for two years. So then a couple of weeks ago, I don't know if it was two weeks ago, three weeks ago, I kind of lose track of time. But we took pictures on the field for senior pictures, which is something that usually happens a little earlier in the year, but we're glad that we got to do it. It was, it was four different groups, I believe, three different groups. We went down to the bleachers. We took the picture that the seniors usually take. And then we like did the 2021 on the field. And then the Danbury PTO painted the wall for us near the field, near the baseball fields. And then we did, all did our handprints on the side of the building, which was really fun. It was like a, it was a nice senior experience. We got to be with other seniors, which is nice. So then on May 10th, the Key Club celebrated its 50th anniversary and did an induction. So not the, not the overall Key Club, but the DHS Key Club has been there for 50 years, which is a pretty good achievement. And then also the peer leaders put together a celebration for teacher, teacher appreciation last week. And they had every day of a teacher appreciation week, they had a poem written about a different teacher right over the loudspeaker. And then they did, so that was all handwritten poetry. And then they had like food and they had like something in the break room for all the teachers, which was very nice. And I think that's all I have this week, but we'll be back probably obviously before the end of the year. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So do we have anyone from ACE?
Good evening, Cabinet and community members. Thank you for allowing me to represent and speak on behalf of the Alternative Center for Excellence. ACE students will host our 18th Annual Coffee House on June 3rd. Students and staff will have the opportunity to share their creativity through reading original poetry, musical performances and artwork. The ACE graduation ceremony will take place on Wednesday, June 8th at the Broadview Auditorium at 3:00 PM. The change in date will allow ACE students to participate in both the ACE graduation ceremony and the DHS graduation ceremony. On June 16th, ACE will be celebrating the birth of our founder, Joe Pepin. A virtual slideshow is being created to celebrate the impact that Joe has had on the Danbury community. And the ACE Facebook page is collecting appreciations that alumni and staff have for Joe. Students in the building are working on creating a bulletin board to celebrate Joe's legacy and the history of these. The ACE Humanities Department will be administering, administering our humanities benchmarks the week of May 17th to May 21st. On May 21st, ACE will be holding a virtual guest speakers to present careers that serve the community. This special day is being organized by Diana DiNardo and DJ Jimenez. ACE staff will be running entrance interviews from May 18th to 20th. And then again on May 25th and 26th. Thank you to the ACE staff for beginning the process of building the relationships with our incoming families. ACE would like to announce our April Student of the Month Award winners. Excuse me. Sorry about that. Thank you to the ACE staff for beginning the process of building the relationships with our incoming families. ACE would like to announce our April Student of the Month Award winners, Ramir Rivera and Alexa Doherty. Congrats to Alexa for also making the honor roll in quarter three. ACE would also like to publicly acknowledge and congratulate our most recent students of the week, Liliana Palma and Jen Sedano. Keep up the great work. Thank you all for allowing me to share the great things happening with the ACE family this spring.
Thank you, Chris. Before I move on, does any board members have any question for either one of our representatives? Seeing none, seeing none. We're going to move on to action item A. Rachel?
I move that the Board of Education approved the 2021 to 2022 school reopening plan for five full days, full school days per week for 180 days as presented by the administration.
Motion made by Rachel. Could I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Joe De Silva?
Madam Chair, I, we've been getting some updates from regarding the estimate. And one of the, one of the requirements, and I think I got to double check it, maybe by June 23rd, but I'm not really sure. They've just looking at some dates. But we have to publish the, for the board, has to publish your reopening plan. That is a requirement to submit the grant, so I just wanted you to know that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. Thank you, Dr. Sal. Kathy, could you do the roll call?
Oh, could I just make a quick comment?
Yes.
I just want to, you know, reiterate my point from our workshop. And thank you for having that. That was, you know, greatly helpful. Just about the distance learning piece. And I'm not suggesting that it remain, you know, as in its current form. Just, just that we should recognize the innovation of, of what happened. When, when this first, when we first launched DL, you know, I thought that this would change education forever. And, you know, it's funny, we talked about extending the school year because I thought, you know, with this, there would be a way to mitigate the summer slide, the, the, the learning loss over the summer. So I just, you know, to have it fall by the wayside, I wonder, you know, what we've learned from this experience or what we've gained from this experience. So that's just my thought. Of course, we need to fully reopen schools. I'm no doubt in my mind, I mean, that's been the message from the state level all year long. And so, you know, I'm glad, I'm glad we're making it work. Thank you.
Are there any, are there any other questions on action item A? Seeing none. Kathy, could you do the roll call, please?
Rachel?
Aye.
Gladys?
Yes.
Lauren Daly?
Aye.
Joe De Silva?
Aye.
Catherine Hodgson?
Aye.
Richard Gennelli?
Aye.
Al Russo?
Aye.
Amy Spolino?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you. The motion is so care. Rachel, would you do action item B?
I move that the Board of Education approved the revised 2021 to 2022 school calendar in accordance with 21-71.
Moved by Rachel. Seconded by Joe?
Before.
Okay.
Yeah, I just need to add something because.
Okay, go ahead.
Beginning of the board meeting, you heard a commentary. Let me, what my understanding as of right now from the State Department is that the boards are not required to, not introduce, I'm sorry, to offer a remote to the, to your, to the community. But in, in that same communication, they articulated five to six opportunities, kind of like what Rachel was talking about, when you might be able to use it. As of right now, the, the emergency days in the calendar, there's five days in there. And we'll talk about that, but the board has to stay with the five days because we have no authorization. The executive order has expired to say to anyone that you can offer DL at this point. Now, they may, they'll probably come up with some recommendations, but I just wanted to make that known to the, to the board. And maybe Kara can speak about the calendar for a little bit.
I want to just quickly comment on what Rachel brought up because I think the point you were trying to make, Rachel, if I'm correct, is along the innovative practice and use of technology in terms of, you know, creating learning environments that, that look different for students. And we're having lots of conversations about that. And so I kind of want to separate the pandemic distance learning from innovative practice moving forward. And so we're having, you know, informed conversations that guide graduation requirements for students and opening up flexibilities that perhaps, perhaps were not there before in our understanding of what is acceptable. Quick example, you know, as we're looking at after-school programming, a lot of our kids either, you know, can't, can't do the bus or can't get picked up. And buses, bussing is extremely expensive. We've already talked about after-school programs where kids can log back in virtually once they get home and meet with the teacher, convenience for the teacher, convenience for the student. We're likely to get more engagement. And it's really all about the balance of the virtual use. And I think we were at a point where, you know, the pendulum had swung so severely. And it's really about where can we instill innovative practice in, in our teaching and learning environments that. Um, and it's really about where can we instill innovative practice in in our teaching and learning environments that maximize what we're trying to do using the digital technologies that we've now become familiar with. So I just wanted to say that we are very much thinking along those lines.
That's great, Kara. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Um, yeah, I don't know, Kevin or Kara, do you wanna, Kevin, you wanna comment about the calendar or adjustments?
I could just quickly briefly. There are just a couple of of changes on the calendar, and it really had to do with, um, you know, now with the, moving into the year, really more delineating some of the the pre-days for teachers. Really, the structural calendar for the students haven't changed. Um, we did remove um two or three of the early dismissal days, uh just to really only make sure that we have in there what what it is that we need and to reduce anything that was back-to-back. Uh, which we thought was a little disruptive, and so we just took a second pass over that. Um, we added a new uh, a new teacher orientation day in there, um, because we didn't negotiate three, not two, and so we just moved that. Some of those professional development pieces around at the beginning of the year, but it really didn't impact the structural calendar for the student. Um, there was an error in 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 June on one of the dates, and so that has been since corrected. It was more of a typo, so. I think we're we're good. So the 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 calendar has been, uh, you know, vetted by both unions and have gone through the uh, gone through the circles of review.
Are there any other question concerning the uh count?
No, just, just to mention to the board that um what surrounding districts have done, it's it's relative to the comments apparently. If in fact, the um, the state comes back and says the board has an option for the remote learning for um those days. One of the things the districts did, and I I think it's a good idea personally, but you can talk about it. Uh, you could, you could use the first three days, for example, as emergency days and then because, and then you can bump the next two, just so that you don't go too late in June. But the motivation, guys, anybody that subbed in our schools or doing anything, we do not have air conditioning in the schools, it's very difficult late June. So that is an issue for us, but I just put that out there. So if things change, the board can consider some kind of a of a blended uh opportunity. But that's, that's, that's remaining depending on what the state does, and they come back to you with. I just wanna leave you with that. Thank you.
Any other questions on this motion? Uh, Kathy, could you do the roll call for the motion, please?
Rachel Chaleski.
Aye.
Gladys Cooper.
Aye.
Lorraine, I'm sorry, Lauren Daley.
Aye.
Joe De Silva.
Aye.
Catherine Hodgson.
Aye.
Richard Gennelli.
Aye.
Al Russo.
Aye.
Amy Spolino.
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Thank you. Motion so care. Uh, Amy, would you do action item C?
Yes, I make a motion that the Board of Education accept for first reading policy ninety-three twenty-six taping. Recording of V O E meetings as recommended by the policy committee. I'm sorry. Seventy-two.
I need to know who's second.
Joe De Silva's second.
Any questions on the motion? C and nine. Kathy, could you do the roll call?
Rachel Chaleski.
Aye.
Gladys Cooper.
Aye.
Lauren Daley.
Aye.
Joe De Silva.
Aye.
Catherine Hodgson.
Aye.
Richard Gennelli.
Aye.
Al Russo.
Aye.
Amy Spolino.
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Uh, motion so care. Uh, Catherine Hodgson, would you do action item D?
Yes. Um, I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the second reading and adoption policy nine-two-seven-three conflicts of interest. As recommended by the Policy Committee, twenty-one dash seventy-three.
Motion made by Catherine, could I hear a second?
Al Russo.
Okay. Any questions? On the motion? C and nine, uh Kathy, could you do the roll call, please?
Rachel Chaleski.
Aye.
Gladys Cooper.
Aye.
Lauren Daley.
Aye.
Joe De Silva.
Aye.
Catherine Hodgson.
Aye.
Richard Gennelli.
Aye.
Al Russo.
Aye.
Amy Spolino.
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Motion so care, thank you. Lauren, would you do action item E, please? Lauren?
I'm mute, Lauren.
Yeah, could you do it, Joe? What?
I got it right here. Um. Action, which one was it? F?
I.
E.
Action item E, ninety-three hundred series.
Yep, I got it. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept for second reading and adaption. Adoption policy ninety-two seventy-three com- oh, that's the one we just read. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept for second reading and adoption policy ninety-three hundred methods of operation. As recommended by the Policy Committee, sorry.
That's okay. Uh, motion made, Lauren, second by.
Catherine.
Catherine. Any question concerning the motion? C and nine, uh Kathy, would you do the roll call, please?
Rachel Chaleski.
Aye.
Gladys Cooper.
Aye.
Lauren Daley.
Aye.
Joe De Silva.
Aye.
Catherine Hodgson.
Aye.
Richard Gennelli.
Aye.
Al Russo.
Aye.
Amy Spolino.
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Thank you. Motion so care. Al Russo, could you do action um number E, the nine ninety-three twenty-one series? Action F, I'm sorry.
I make a motion that the Board of Education accept for the second reading, the adoption policy ninety-three twenty-one. Board of Education workshop sessions is recommended by the Policy Committee and equivalent twenty-one dash seventy-five. Second, Madam Chair.
Second by Joe. Any questions concerning the policy? C and nine, Kathy, could you do the roll call?
Rachel Chaleski.
Aye.
Gladys Cooper.
Aye.
Lauren Daley.
Aye.
Joe De Silva.
Aye.
Catherine Hodgson.
Aye.
Richard Gennelli.
Aye.
Al Russo.
Yes.
Amy Spolino.
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Motion so care, thank you so very much. Uh, Richard, uh, Mr. Gennelli, could you do action item G?
I make a motion that the Board of Education accept for the second reading. And adoption policy number nine-three-one-three administrative regulations, formations. Adoption and amendment as recommended by the Policy Committee.
Motion made by Mr. Gennelli, do I hear a second?
Second.
By Rachel. Are any discussion or question concerning the policy? C and nine, uh Kathy, could you do the roll call?
Rachel Chaleski.
Aye.
Gladys Cooper.
Aye.
Lauren Daley.
Aye.
Joe De Silva.
Aye.
Catherine Hodgson.
Aye.
Richard Gennelli.
Aye.
Al Russo.
Aye.
Amy Spolino.
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Thank you so very much. Dr. Sale, you're up next.
Okay, let me just get to my, hmm, give me a second, yeah. Okay. The phone keeps going out. Okay, um. Let's see, motion.
You wanna start with the city council municipal budget?
Um, th- those of you that attended, thank you. Um, you you heard last week what happened at the meeting. Um, we, 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 our budget was recommended to the subcommittee and then recommended to the committee as a whole. Had a long discussion about it, but our budget is at one point two-five in terms of our operation budget. Um, and we're gonna have to start dealing with that. What I, number two on here talks about the the state and federal state grants, and let me tie those two together. Because um, as you know, uh, the board had asked for that thirteen and a half million. Um, we're down to, we asked for that six and a half, we reduced it because of money in the ESSA. We're gonna have to now uh go into there and uh look at how we're going to um mitigate um the 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 difference. Um, you you all know, I don't wanna preach to you all, um, we're gonna have to open schools, the 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 opening of schools in there. Along with staffing and other things that we need. Uh, we talked about the cliff, that's just the reality. Um, you do have some help on that with the way we're opening, the reopening with some of the staffing moving down, but you are gonna be faced with. That issue in three years when the ESSA money goes, so now maybe something else will happen that will mitigate that, that's a possibility. Next year when you come around to the budget season. Um, I checked with um, and Courtney's on, I know, we've been checking with Hartford, we're trying to get clarity on language. And let me tell you, it's been very, very difficult. It's not because our our contingent, our legislative group hasn't hasn't tried. It's just their um, the way they operate. Um, we believe that the money that was coming out of the committee. To the um, that will go for a general assembly for a vote, which would give us uh next year, I believe. Uh, two and a half million dollars uh mu- more money that we should be getting. There's also some other options there, uh with pilot money coming to the city that we may be in line for. But right now, um, you know, the the governor uh has not pushed back uh on that. You may recall, his his recommendation was a pause, that doesn't seem to be happening, so that's the good news for us. How much, we won't know, I don't think, until the first week in June is when the vote is supposed to be. So we're gonna be um, meeting and looking at the uh ESSA money. And we did meet, the the state is sending something out, they've added some criteria to the ESSA money in terms of due dates. Um, um, and um, we're, we'll have to follow those, and we'll be in in good stead to do that. They're gonna ask us to build on the ESSA two money uh with the criteria, so we're, we're gonna be pretty good with that. Uh, it's just that we're gonna have to figure out what's gonna happen in the Alliance money, uh because that was part of ECS, so until we understand. Uh, what's happening with that, we we really don't know how to move that that around. But we are gonna have to the, look at the ESSA money, two and three, uh to mitigate the difference between what the town had recommended. And what we need to open school. Uh, I'm gonna just stop for a second and ask Courtney, uh if she has anything to add to that.
No, Dr. Sal, I think that captures it. Um, we have a budget planning session on Friday, so. I I'll just say we did submit the ESSR two grant um to the state, um, and waiting for acceptance on that, and. In the process of submitting the ESSR three grant, they released the timeframe. Um, and so we're working through, like Dr. Sal said, we have our carry forward of the seven million plus the. Six million additional needs and the new reopening plan, so as we go through and prioritize. We look forward to working with the board about a multi-year plan that looks at the next four years, um, until the ESSR money runs out and talking about. As we've built that strategy to build towards that um, that need for those academy years and for when those ESSR monies potentially are not with us any longer. So we're looking forward to to briefing the board on that as we start that process on Friday. Thanks, Dr. Sal.
Thank you, thank you. And again, Ryan, um, Ryan is monitoring it for us in Hartford. Uh, I know Courtney sent him an email the other day, um, and then he sent some information to us. So uh, as we get this information, obviously, we'll we'll let you know. But right now, as we think it's good news that the governor uh will sign at least that recommendation that came out of the subcommittee. So that um, that'll be helpful to us. Um, thank you. That that takes care of A and B really, uh for me. Unless anybody has any questions. Thank you, Dr. Sale. You're welcome. So, um, thank you, Gladys, I think that's, I'm done with my report. Do you wanna go to discussion?
I'll go to the discussion, Adam, Dr. Sale.
Yes, okay. Um. Let me, uh, as as, we just uh try to frame this, the Tyler is a program that we're moving into, that's the budgeting system. And um, you know, the the, as the board of ed members have heard and discussed, the finance department has been working on this since. You know, February, uh to correct, uh, you know, these errors that were made with the HSA, and they've been working diligently on this. Um, as we looked at this problem, um, we've noticed some other tendencies in there, and I will say to what we're learning. I think it was Joe asked, well, where did the problem stem from? It really is the way um, these systems are set up with calendars of deductions and um data that's entered. It seemed that for us, the era, at least in this respect, was a data entry era. So what we um, what we are doing with this new financial system, it is pretty comprehensive and it's very uh difficult to maintain, and. Our department is not that well, you know, staffed, quite frankly. So we worked on uh doing a few things that the board should uh know, because it's paramount, I know, that the importance. That we follow steps in order to assure that we have an opening. What we're told, everyone, uh as we transition through the next month and a half, July first is our window to open up. So we have to make sure everything is in line with our budget, our payroll and those things. So when we open up the new budget year, everything uh paychecks and deductions are all uh corrected. So one of the things that Courtney had needed to do, and we've been able to uh do that, uh along with the Tyler help, is that. We have a project manager the next two months that are really going to assist in terms of uh making sure that. All of the um various components of the transition happens and happens in a a timely way. Um, we've been able to ascertain, because this Tyler conversion is 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 not unique just to Danbury. Many districts in the in the state have been able, had to transition because of um the the ending of the, of an old system that not being maintained. We've been able to um have a person who is very deeply set in uh the uh this process of of the Tyler. And um is going to work with Courtney um into looking at the um, the setups to make sure everything is in line. She has been through these and been through a lot of the issues, so with her advice, that will give us a a lot of safety net and redundancies. To make sure that uh everything uh is is according to the way it has to be in order to go in into Tyler. And then um, we'll make sure that we're working, obviously, with Tyler very closely with HR and the Finance Committee. Because right now, this is a blended program, and they will be uh helping us. What I suggest that we do, if it's okay with you all, because I know you'll have questions, is that um, that the Finance Committee uh meet maybe next week. And tomorrow morning, we're gonna present a work plan with these constituents there, talking about our needs. And maybe, um, if it's okay with you, Madam Chair, I would invite the Chairman of the Finance Committee to the meeting tomorrow morning. And to listen in and be first in what we're doing, so that when we meet as a, when you meet as a uh subcommittee of the board on finances. You have a full understanding of how, what we're, how we're moving forward, how we're reconciling the books, how we're doing the publishing. Our um, you know, our balances, making sure sure all of that uh is is known, so. I thought that might be a good idea, uh so that everybody's updated, if that's okay with you.
It's okay with me, if it's okay with the board members. There's no questions.
If it's okay, then maybe then you could call a uh Finance Committee and then you could update everybody on that and. Uh, that about the work plan, and that that would be a a good step forward. Are you okay with that?
Yes, uh, it's a possible right now. Uh, I know we're getting busy, uh, the nineteenth, which is a off Wednesday.
For Finance Committee, sure. I'm unavailable.
The nineteenth.
I'm not available on the nineteenth, Madam Chair, which is fine, just I happen to not be available that night.
Okay, okay.
Madam Chair, did Dr. Sal say there was a a cabinet meeting tomorrow?
Um, the chairman, the chairman, yes.
Meeting. Are you invited to that also? Madam Chair.
I'm sorry?
I'm the Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, am I also invited to that meeting? With your co-chair. Yeah, yes, yes, sir. Thank you. Leadership would be good, so I apologize. And by the way, it's at eight o'clock, Al, well, so Kara will send you an invite.
Yeah, I've got the invite all forwarded along, Dr. Sal, right? Okay, thank you, thank you for working it out, okay?
Courtney, can I ask Courtney a question? Could you clarify some of the beginning points that Sal made? Uh, what was the, what was the?
What was the, what was the, the initial issue?
Sure. So we were in a system, a legacy system called Phoenix that went offline with support on July one of 2020. So we were running a payroll from that system without support from July one to January one. We signed a contract for a new system that started us with an implementation on October, I think, second or third. That's a really short implementation timeframe for payroll, you know, to go live. We did, we put in place a lot of controls. It's a very, very new system. So what it does is you you have to work with the Human Resource Group because it's now integrated where we were once siloed. There's, you build out salary schedules and work calendars and benefit deductions in separate tables. It's a really nice system. We look forward to previewing it for the board. It's very transparent. There's a very beautiful audit trail of everything that happens where we were living in a paper-based system. And we really look forward to sharing that with you. There's an employee self-service portal that people will be able to view all of their pay information when we go live. But we were unfortunate in that we had to do a mid-year go-live implementation. Normally, you'd do it on July one and it would be a nice process where you could set up your general ledger, test your general ledger, set up your personal payables and and run your payroll and you get to run parallel test payrolls. We didn't have the luxury of doing that in this case. So, and my staff worked tremendously hard, tremendously hard from October all the way through the January one. They didn't take any time off over the holidays. And we ran a lot of controls. So I want everyone to be assured, we ran the last payroll in the Phoenix system that had deductions December fifteenth. We ran a December thirtieth payroll in the Phoenix system. And we did a calculation in the new system and looked at side by side every single person's pay, every deduction, and did variances. And we had to push the button to go live. I am happy to say that we paid a hundred percent of our staff and there were a few errors, as you would expect when you go live in the new system. What did we do wrong? We didn't communicate that well to the staff. We ought to have, you know. We were just literally trying to get this off the ground. So number one. And then number two, the issue that arose with the HSA contribution, essentially, in the system, we we need to and needed to establish very strict controls about who has access to what points in the system. Dr. Sal has now put that structure in place so that we have an executive steering committee we're meeting tomorrow so that we can turn off rights for people so that very specific people, you have the right controls in place. I'll just say also, my payroll group, every payroll does a payroll to payroll comparison to compare every variance that happened. So from payroll twenty-three to payroll twenty-four, we look at every single deduction, every single line and say, okay, what changed? Yes, this person reduced their health insurance. This person left the district, this person, for example. And it's labor intensive, but it will be when you're in a new system and you're testing things. And so at one point, there was an HSA deduction, it's called the Health Savings Account Deduction, that was, is set up in the system as being a one-time, twice a year or a one-time a year, depending on your employee relationship. That deduction was set up with probably not as robust training as should have been. And what that meant is there's a calendar with that. And somehow, we don't know yet, every single date in that, in that particular deduction got checked off. We don't know how it happened, but there were too many people that had access to that. We've shut down that that functionality. So when we ran the payroll, it ran through with an HSA employer-sponsored contribution to the employees. My staff immediately caught that because we have checks and balances in place. So when we send a transmittal, we normally look at every register, the deduction register, the payroll register. We were up against a very tight timeframe, so we submitted that batch to the bank in order that everybody could get paid up on a Monday for that Wednesday payroll. When we, when we noticed the error, we we talked to the treasurer of the bank and did an immediate reversal of that transaction. Once we did a reversal of that transaction, we had full assurance from the bank that we could follow up and make sure that every one of those transactions got reversed. The transactions, when you talk about them, there's a PPD and a CCD file. So the PPD files are the ones that included the HSA transmitted missions. We found out later that when an HSA transmission goes into an account, it counts as a contribution and then a distribution. So in order to have that adjusted and corrected, we had to submit a special file to say it's not a contribution and a distribution, you need to adjust the distribution so there will not be a tax implication. Working through Cigna and the bank, that took us at least a month and a half to get to the right parties to do that correction. But from day one on February before this, the reversal happened before the bank settlement date, Cigna assured us in writing that that could be a hundred percent corrected. We just needed to get them the right file. And we have the whole tax year to do that. We did not want to wait for the whole tax year to do that. We did that, you know, as soon as we got into it with the right parties at Cigna. Now, I do take responsibility for the fact that it took a month and a half to correct. It shouldn't have taken that long to correct. But that's, that was the HSA issue. It ran, it it ran through the system. We followed all the proper banking protocols. We have controls in place. And Dr. Sal has since put additional controls in place where we now also have IT involved, you know, in our steering committee, which we need from a data perspective. We have HR collaboration and we're looking at all those points to make sure that all the right controls are in place with this consultant that's helping us. I hope that answers the question.
Yes, thank you very much, Courtney.
Thank you, Rachel.
So I don't know, did you set a finance meeting for next week? I missed it.
Next Wednesday at nineteen. Is that's okay with you, Mr. Gennelli?
I don't have any problems. Just Courtney went through it all things. I'm a little bit curious as to what we're going to do with the finance meeting.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I think we're talking about the work plan also, if I have any other budget pitch.
Okay, so just a follow-up as to what the meeting will be for tomorrow. Okay, thank you. The nineteenth is fine.
Thank you.
Yep, the nineteenth is fine, Mrs.
Okay, okay. It's, while we have anyone here, so I don't want to go back and forth because Cara has enough to do. Is six o'clock good for everyone?
Good for me.
Good for me.
Okay, okay. Okay, we'll go with next Wednesday, six o'clock, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. You have anything else to add, Dr. Sal?
Oh, no, that's enough.
Okay. I just don't want to leave you out, Dr. Sal.
I am nothing.
I think next down on the agenda is the informations from policies. Please read them at your convenience, okay? Board Chairperson report, very brief. We met with the consulting firm last night, Ray Associate, who's going to be leading us and taking us through the process for our new superintendent. And we will be following the process and they're going to outline the structure for the board to go through. And, you know, he has a timeline all set for the board. And, you know, when we start getting into the overall heavy work, we don't plan to leave anybody out. We're going to keep the information coming to the community. And when they get ready to set up their focus groups and and the other information that goes along with input into hiring a new superintendent, we will try our best, we will do our best to keep everyone informed. So that's where we are right now. We had our first meeting with them last night. I thought it was an excellent meeting. And they are going to work us through the process, okay? Seeing no other information or no other discussion or any committee's report?
I have a committee report.
Okay, go ahead, Rachel.
This that the Policy Committee met last week. In light of our reopening plan, the committee reviewed the COVID policies that we have in place just to check for relevancy. There were a few that will expire at the end of the year, but the committee plans to revisit those at the beginning of next year. And I just want to thank our two legal minds that joins, joined the meeting. Thanks, Mr. Wallston, for facilitating and for everyone's input and feedback. I I enjoy those, you know, conversations. And I also just want to inquire as to, you know, now that we are discussing reopening, when might the board begin to meet in person?
Well, I think our last conversation was once everyone get fully vaccinated. I think that was maybe a couple of months ago. And I think it would be most appropriate to, you know, next month is June, July. Hopefully, this July and August, we won't be doing meeting except to do what we need for the superintendent search. So I would, if everyone is comfortable, why not look at in September when school? This way, everybody on the board will have been fully vaccinated. And I think that was one of the things that Kate brought up. And if we do it now, if I'm not mistaken, we can't do it at Beaverburg anyway. Am I right, Dr. Sal?
My, my, my understanding is the inside social distancing is still a requirement. I think that's why the city council still meets in that way. So we'd have to move you to a bigger spot, yes.
Okay.
Probably up to the high school. Yeah, to the.
The black box was tossed around as an idea.
Yeah, that would, I would say you'd have to probably go there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sure you didn't, I don't want to butt in. But I I'm sure when you meet with the new interviews and stuff, you do that live. So we would set that up for you there so that
Yes.
focus groups and all that could take place. But we would move you into probably to high school.
I'm comfortable, you know, with waiting until September. Our kids will be, will be back in school four days. And, you know, again, July and August, hopefully, we can have some time off this year and you know, move forward in September. Does anyone else have any other ideas or you want to go, you know?
I just feel the score better. I thought what Kate said was wait until everybody is eligible for the vaccine. And I know we're towards the end, but I just feel like the sooner the better because it just could keep getting pushed off and pushed off. That's all.
This is cool for two. I tend to agree. I think that in lieu of the fact that Dr. Sal's retiring, it it might be nice that we personally be there to, you know, to, to say goodbye. And I personally have socially emotional with girls and not seeing the rest of my colleagues on the board for a period of time. So
Mrs. Gennelli, I can't hear you.
Something that could be maybe the last meeting, the board meeting of this year that we may be able to do that will keep everybody comfortable. It might be a nice gesture just to have that. What I'm saying is, in lieu of the fact that Dr. Sal is retiring, I thought it might be nice if we could do it this, this year. It perhaps in the last board meeting of June so that we could say formally goodbye in person as well as each of us seeing each other since it's been a long time since we've at least seen each other face to face. If everyone is comfortable with that, you know, it might be a solution. I don't know what regulations are that. If some of the people can't attend or don't want to attend, they could do it students learning. And perhaps we could, those that want to feel comfortable attending, couldn't, can do it in person. Just, just the thought process.
Yeah, the thought process along with, you know, no matter how we go about doing.
About what the board members feel about that.
Yes.
Yeah, I I'd just like to echo, Mr.
Silence. Did everybody hear?
Yeah, you're, you're, you're. I'd like to echo Mr. Gennelli's sentiments if we go for a, a live board meeting at the end of, at the end of the session so we can say goodbye or to Dr. Sal in person. I'm not totally uncomfortable with Zoom. I think we communicate rather well. But I'm hoping maybe next year we could operate in sort of a hybrid mode because trying to get across town at rush hour, five minutes, that's forty-five minutes. But yes, I I would like to be at least once in June and I echo Mr. Gennelli's sentiments on that. Thank you.
Yes, yes, I am.
I would just like to say I I agree. I would like to meet in June also and I would like to be able to see everybody and see Dr. Sal before he goes.
Boy, that sunset's going to be kind of pretty, huh?
So is everybody comfortable with the last board meeting in June?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Uh, I, Madam Chair, I'll, I'll double check with, with Kathy. I'm sure it's fine. And it's okay with you. We'll move up to the high school. Is that okay?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. CNN, I make a motion, I need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So move, Madam Chair.
Move by Mrs. De Silva. Second by?
Al Russo.
Al, okay. Thank you. Good night. Thank you all for participating.
Night.